...because that's supposed to get the attention upstairs so that we can start. There we go. I'll call to order the Arvada City Council meeting for November 19, 2018, and call upon Councilmember Mark McGough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time, I'd like to ask that council and those in attendance join me in a moment of silent reflection. And now, I'll ask Matthew and Isaac if you'll come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
...to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, Matthew and Isaac, let me come down and adjust that microphone, but I'd like you to speak, step up to the microphone and give us your full names and tell us the badges that you're working on and the troop that you belong to. Just a moment. Okay, just tell us your name, the troop you belong to, and if you're working on a badge.
I'm Isaac Dean, and I'm from PAC 600, and I'm O'Learywell.
I'm Matthew Dean from Troop 999. I am a second class, working on first class.
Very good. And you might check with your leaders because I think you can get credit for some badges, specific badges, like citizenship in the community and communication. So there's, just by being here tonight, you get some extra bonus points. Very good. Kristen Ruship, you'll do the roll call.
Mayor Woden.
Here.
Mayor Proton Marion.
Here.
Councilmember Fifer.
Here.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McGough.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Mr. Fifer.
I'd like to move to excuse Councilmember Dot Miller from Sunday night's event.
Motion to accuse Ms. Miller, who is on a well-deserved vacation with her husband. That passes six to zero with Ms. Miller being absent, she is excused. Next, we have the approval of the October 29th and November 5th minutes. I understand one of those has a correction. Which one was that, Kristen?
The fifth.
So we've already gotten information in terms of the correction for November 5th. Any further update or changes from council? If not, the October 29th and the November 5th with correction minutes will be approved. Next, I have a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Ms. Ford.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to invite the members from the Arvada Economic Development Association, Arvada Visitors Center, Arvada Chamber of Commerce, and Old Town Arvada Business Improvement District. The Saturday after Thanksgiving, November 24, 2018, is known as Small Business Saturday. Thank you. The Arvada Chamber of Commerce, the Arvada Visitors Center, the Arvada Economic Development Association, and Old Town Arvada Business Improvement District are partnering in a promotion, asking people to shop Arvada small businesses this holiday season, highlighting the National Shopping Holiday, November 24, which is referred to as Small Business Saturday. Small businesses create jobs, boost Arvada's economy, and preserve neighborhoods. Each purchase made in Arvada goes to pay for city services such as police, parks, and street maintenance. Keeping the dollars in Arvada helps create and retain quality jobs. Small businesses are the nation's largest employer and account for the majority of job growth. Next time you make a purchase, remember, shop Arvada. And I have a proclamation tonight that is signed by the mayor and all of city council, and it reads, "Whereas the government of Arvada, Colorado celebrates local small businesses and the contributions they make to the local economy and community." According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7 percent of all businesses with employees in the United States. They're responsible for 65.9 percent of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2017. And whereas, small businesses employ over 47.5 percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas 90 percent of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community, and whereas the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small, independently-owned businesses was support, was to support their community, and that was 64 percent. And whereas, Arvada, Colorado supports local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, the mayor and city council of the city of Arvada, Colorado, do hereby proclaim November 24, 2018, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of Arvada to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
Can we take a picture? Yes, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Scott Spears. I own Schoolhouse Scrumptious, Super Zoom Bang Bang, Still Radish, and Sock Down in Old Town, Arvada. There's a lot of essence right there. Just want to say thank you guys so much for all your support of all the businesses in Arvada. We, as business owners, love working with the city, especially, I mean, every department that you guys have. All these ladies represent all the different ones, from the Visitors Center to the Chamber to Economic Development, Joe with the bid. I'm sure I'm missing a bunch, but thank you guys so much. And please come out on Saturday, 11:00 a.m. There's going to be free breakfast burritos in the square for the first 100 people from Schoolhouse. Hunter Bay will be out there giving out some free coffee. All the businesses are extremely excited. It's supposed to be a beautiful day, and we're hoping to see a lot of people out in Old Town, as well as all of Arvada, for all the businesses. So, thank you guys again so much for your support.
Right. I just want to know if Mr. Spears is going to apply to be the head football coach at the University of Colorado?
No, there's more people that are more qualified than my.
We may be talking to Connollyza Rice, but I'm not sure. Okay, we have several people that have signed up to speak for public comment, and I'll start with Erin Hensley, and Ms. Hensley's got a few folks with her tonight.
So I'm just going to have the Shrine of St. Anne's student green team introduce themselves, and if they have a speech prepared, they can say a quick spiel.
My name is Mary Hensley. I'm in second grade, I'm in second grade, I'm seven years old, and I'm on the student green team at Shrine of St. Anne's. And I'm having a problem with too many people in Arvada throwing away too many recyclables. Thank you.
My name's Anna Conjiman. I'm in third grade. I'm eight years old, and I go to school at the Shrine of St. Anne's, and I have a problem with too many, um, waste bags being on the trees.
I am Maggie Galviano, and I'm a fourth grader at St. Anne's, and I've been in student green team for three years now, and I've learned a lot from Erin, and like sorting through our trash and learning how you can bump it up and make things change.
My name's Kylie, and I'm in third grade, and I have a problem with people littering a lot at like, like in parking lots, and, um, yeah.
My name's Eli, and I have a problem with that the recycling truck only comes once every two weeks, so we have, we're getting a lot, too much waste, too much recyclables, and then we have to throw some of it away.
My name is Jonathan Hensley. I'm eight years old, and I've been in student green team for three years. I have a problem about people throwing away leaves when they could just use them for compost to make our gardens greener.
My name is Isaac Dean, and I'm on the Shrine of St. Anne's student green team, and I think the city should encouraging, encourage recycling more in different ways. And I think recycling is important because it will save our planet from dying, from being covered in trash, and animals from dying.
Good evening. My name's Matthew Dean. I'm in sixth grade, and I'm on the Shrine of St. Anne's student green team. I think an important first step towards a green city is being aware of how our actions affect our government, our environment.
My name is Emma. I am in second grade, and I have a problem with too many papers going in the trash.
My name is Wyatt DeFries, and I'm in fourth grade. I'm on the Shrine of St. Anne's green team, and my problem is that a lot of perfectly good food is being thrown in the trash.
Thank you, guys. I have a brief speech prepared. Hello, it's my name, first of all, thank you councilmembers for the opportunity. My name is Erin Hensley. I've been a Narvada resident for 11 years. I'm a parent to three Shrine of St. Anne's students, and I started the student green team three years ago. I gathered a few SGT members here tonight so that I could share with you the positive impact they've had within their school. Three years ago, the school did not have recycling. Cost and mismanagement led to its prior demise. A few teachers were carrying recyclables home, but a school with over 300 students, we were still landfilling 900 pounds of trash weekly. In 2016, I compared competitive bids and educated the school, and in 2017, recycling was restored schoolwide. Taking a proactive stance and managing this high-priority waste issue saved the school $3,000 a year. We were also the first school in Jefferson County to secure a Green Up Our Schools grant through a privately-funded nonprofit in Boulder. In the first year, our waste assessments illustrated a 40 percent reduction in waste, which included 300 pounds of recyclables diverted from the landfill weekly, and 50 pounds of untouched packaged food kept out of the waste stream weekly. These kids sacrificed recess periods for three years to sift through garbage, including, well, not three years entirely, but over the course of three years, sifting through soapy, smelly cafeteria waste to show others how to be better stewards of their environment. You have heard before about Arvada's abysmal 13 percent recycling rate. The national average is 35 percent, and some front-range cities exceed this. The city needs to make waste, and reducing it a bigger priority. With over 115,000 residents in Arvada, studies show that we are probably sending 3.2 million pounds of waste per week to Colorado landfills. Your vision to dream big and deliver delivers big pollution to our state. Less than 5 percent of this waste is diverted to recycling thanks to the residents willing to invest. The issue of waste is bigger than just recycling can handle. However, a single waste and recycling hauler would greatly improve Arvada's carbon footprint. Not all haulers are created equal, and the current competitive market allows people to find the cheapest route possible to dump their waste without care, 30 percent of which could be recycled, and 50 percent composted to decrease methane gas emissions. Perhaps Arvada should reinvest in a full-time sustainability coordinator? As was shown in 2015, they could properly educate the city then, and then Arvada could roll out recycle bins near local parks, or in Old Town where the student green team found numerous bottles and cans tucked in bushes during a litter cleanup. My vision is that Arvada will start dreaming better, dreaming greener, and delivering. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the students for their presentations on this. Next, I'll call on Robin Coopernick. The kids teed it up well for you.
There is no way that I can compete with that. Thank you, guys, for listening to me, for giving me the chance to talk tonight. And I also am going to talk about single hauler trash service in Arvada, and I want to just first start by asking everybody in the room if you would raise your hand, if you are one of the people who has taken the time and energy to invest in, and to research and recycle your recyclables in Arvada. And please raise your hand if you compost as well. And so, that's amazing, and I'm really impressed, and especially all you kids, this is wonderful. It's so great to see you. But sadly, as we just learned, Arvada as a city is not so great when it comes to recycling. We are only at 13 percent. So I'm just going to make you aware of a report that I recently read. It's one that was published by EcoCycle and the Colorado Public Interest Research Group. It's a joint study. They come out with it every year, and so they've just come out with their 2018 annual report. And just before the meeting, I had a chance to email the link to everyone here, so you guys have it in your, in your box. So I just want to share a couple of fun facts, maybe not so fun. Well, this one's fun. If you recycle one aluminum can, that is equivalent, you've now saved the energy that would power a laptop for three hours. If we, as a state, were able to go from 12 percent, which is where we are now in Colorado, to 28 percent of recycling, that is the equivalent of taking 485,000 cars in Colorado off the road. Pretty amazing. But the sad thing, of course, and I know that you kids talked about this and alluded to this, is that Arvada is really way behind our neighbors. Loveland is wonderful. They have a 61 percent recycling rate. Boulder has a 52 percent. Louisville is 44. Aspen and Longmont are at 40 percent, and these are residential recycling rates. Golden is at 34 percent. Superior, 23. Denver, 22. Arvada, 13. So I think the time is now that we can really do something about this, and the most effective way to significantly increase Arvada's recycling rate is to offer a single hauler trash pickup that folks just get automatically opted in by nature of, you know, living in your house or in your apartment, where you have recycling and curbside trash, and even composting provided all curbside pickup. So I ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nancy Young. Good evening, Ms. Young. Oh, you broke it.
Somebody broke it. Good evening, councilmembers, citizens of Arvada. Last week's workshop regarding the rewrite of the Land Development Code was most interesting and somewhat surprising. I am honored to serve as a member of the Citizens Committee for this rewrite project, and I'm one of the very few committee members that has attended every single meeting of this group. The most interesting part of the workshop was the discussion of accessory dwelling units. The discussion resulted from a particularly unsightly unit built at West 64th near Old Wadsworth. This unsightly unit was approved at the staff level, and staff had authority to approve variances of up to 20 percent from the requirements, and this, I believe, had some variances. Such broad discretion seems inappropriate, and a more limited discretion at 10 percent seems like a better idea. The surprising part of the workshop was the total lack of disclosure regarding the parking decision made by the Citizens Committee. Parking, as we all know, is a very contentious issue here in Arvada. The Citizens Committee was nearly unanimous to keep parking ratios in the rewrite at the current levels. We don't know whether the train will reduce car ownership. Furthermore, over 70 percent of Arvadans live so far from the stations that riding the train means they will have to drive. Now, once there's evidence that the train has reduced car ownership and traffic, then a reduced parking ratio should definitely be considered, but not before. When the committee had their meeting and agreed on the, to keep parking requirements unchanged, this consultant spearheading this project said that he would try, I put the word "try" in quotes, but that some staff members wanted the requirements reduced. Well, what kind of city is Arvada where the staff opinion has priority over the citizens? That's what it sounded like. I hope it doesn't turn out to be true. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Allison Wasnesky. Good evening.
Hello, good evening. Good evening, everybody. So I am Allison Wasnesky, and I'm here on behalf of the Arvada Festivals Commission to formally invite you and everyone in this room to our Cheers for the Holidays event next Friday, November 30th. It's from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it will be at the Hilton Garden Inn right here in Arvada. We have four wineries attending, a cidery, and a meadery. This is our yearly fundraiser that we host as the Festivals Commission. It's a wine tasting, and we're benefiting Community Table, which is the Arvada Food Bank. We'll have light hors d'oeuvres served, a live artist, and a silent auction happening, coinciding at the same time, so you can then bid on the live art, which is super cool. Everybody can craft their own keepsake wine charms to take home. I hand-storied them, they're very fun, I would recommend it. This is AFC's last event for 2018, and we sure hope to see everybody there. Tickets are available at arvadafestivals.com. They're getting down into the teens, which is super exciting for us, but a little scary for y'all if you haven't bought tickets yet, so we recommend purchasing as soon as you can. That is all.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to the Festivals Commission for a great, great year. Anybody else wish to address city council or in public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment, and we'll move on to our new business. We have a few items on the consent agenda. First is a resolution accepting a pedestrian access easement from Jefferson County School District R1 within Condalis filing number four, amendment number one. Second consent item is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and Iron Woman Construction and Environmental Services for the sanitary sewer main replacement project in an amount not to exceed approximately $1.6 million. Next is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and First Bank for the provision of loans through the Essential Home Repair Program. Fourth item is a resolution authorizing a construction contract between Arvada and Colt and Steel Corporation for Highway 93 lake drainage modifications in an amount of approximately $156,000. Fifth item is a resolution authorizing the release of Jefferson County's reversionary interest as to limited areas on certain real property owned by the city of Arvada for construction of a public right-of-way adjacent to the Sebel Metropolitan District Development. Sixth item is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and Muller Engineering Company for engineering design services for West 72nd Avenue between Kipling to Sims in an amount not to exceed approximately $2.9 million. And the final consent agenda item is a resolution authorizing an agreement between Arvada and Dewberry Engineers for professional services related to the civil engineering design of Ralston Water Treatment Plant, Zone 5 Pump Station Project, in an amount not to exceed $363,600. So I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I move to approve Resolution R 18-119 through R 18-125.
Motion for approval. All votes cast. That passes six to zero with Ms. Miller being in approved absence. Next, we have a couple of ordinances on first reading. Mr. Marriott.
I move that Council Bill 18-049, an ordinance amending and restating the City of Arvada Retirement Plan and Trust, and Council Bill 18-050, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of certain property along Alchire Street, generally from West 78th Avenue to West 75th Place, for the construction of street, sidewalk, utility, drainage, and/or related improvements as part of the improvements for Leiden Creek from Indiana Street to 72nd Avenue, Urban Drainage Flood Control District Number 14-08.08A, Arvada Project Number 17-DR-02. Both be approved on first reading, ordered published in full, and public hearings set for December 3, 2018, at 6:30 p.m.
Motion for approval on first reading. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero with Ms. Miller being absent. Next, we have a third quarter financial presentation. Mr. Brian Archer. You still have your football coach, right?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
He's still there. You want to trade?
Much like the football season, a third quarter report is not going to be as rosy
as it has been in the past. So unfortunately, all good things must come to an end. Hopefully, this is just a blip on what's going on. Hopefully, city council has received their copy of our printed financial report. This will be posted online tomorrow, so anybody else will have the opportunity to take a So from an overview perspective, third quarter revenues were flat, and this is the first time in a while. We'll dig into that here in just a bit. The various department managers have done a wonderful job staying in line with the budget. We are anticipating the G-line opening at some point.
Yeah.
We're not forecasting when. And then ultimately, we do have a reduction in what we have historically for the past seven years called one-time funds, and we'll touch on that just a little bit in this presentation, and then again during the city council retreat. We do like to highlight some various performance measures in each one of these. So the first one is a city council strategic result, and also in your city council financial policies, and this relates to our required fund balance, and we do sit above our required 17 percent reserve. That number will come down a little bit in the fourth quarter, and if city council remembers, this is what we use as part of our budget process, to make sure that we have that reserve in each and every year of our 10-year financial plan, and we currently do. Second, this reflects public trust. This is part of our survey that goes out every other year, and you can see back in 2011, we were right at our goal, and we've dropped off the past few times, but this is one of our goals internally at staff, to make sure that we drive this number up, and there'll be more coming out about that. Second, we wanted to highlight a couple areas related to parks. The first graphic reflecting a 10-minute walk into how many homes, and this is quite an exciting item, one we've talked about before, a really big idea that was put in process in the 1970s and completed in 2016. Obviously, as a city is growing, this item will continue to come up as we need to put parks in and around the new space. parks in and around the new space, but it is a wonderful statistic. Second relates to open space in a couple of other cities that we're comparing ourselves to. Fort Collins is somewhat of an outlier in the green line, but if we can look past that and look at the other cities that are around us, you can see that Arvada maintains or exceeds its goal in each and every year related to open space, which, being a ring city, is quite the challenge, but something we're quite excited about. Jumping into the numbers, we see a little bit more of a Christmas tree than we have in the past. So for the past few cycles, this has been predominantly green. It is still green, and we are still in the positive, but we have a couple areas we'd like to talk further about, specifically sales tax and auto-use tax. So sales tax, we currently have a monitor light on, meaning it's still up, but we're under our budget, and we'll dive into that here in a minute. And then on the auto-use side, we do have a negative light, meaning both, it is under its budget, and we are concerned about it. Diving further into sales tax, you will see overall the monitor light, significant amounts of red on the screen, few items of green in one monitor. So let me describe what we mean. Red meaning flat or negative growth as compared to the prior quarter and also compared to the prior year. Green meaning obviously positive, greater than our budget. Yellow meaning between our budget, but it is still positive. Or in this case, for liquor stores, year-over-year growth is about 2.7%, and our budget was 4%. If we take a look at the various negative numbers, they go from being flat. Items on public utilities and auto care are flat, and then negative, fast food restaurants, telephone equipment, and retail hardware and furniture and appliances. Now, we're going to say that retail hardware and furniture appliances are related to our reduced growth, related to our reduced building activity. And if you remember, in 2017, we did have a hailstorm, which in the third and fourth quarters ended up with many, many railing permits. That hailstorm is gone. A majority of those roofs are in, and so we're seeing a little bit of a pullback there. On the positive side, fast casual restaurant lounges and grocery chain stores are up anywhere from 6% to 22%. Twenty-two percent being in the fast casual world, and as everybody is well aware, there's many new restaurants to Arvada. Most of them, we categorize as fast casual. So that is for the growth there. On the grocery chain side, we also have brought in a couple of new grocery stores, and so we would expect growth in that area.
Mr. Viber.
So where's the online grocery showing up in the sales tax? Have we identified that yet?
Online is combined in the grocery world, and it comes in through that.
So it comes in on the grocery chain stores?
It does. It does right now.
Okay.
They don't separate online grocery sales versus regular. The only retailers that separate online are the larger ones.
So what about retail, um, retail online that's paying tax?
So we combine that, and that's not one of the categories I put up there.
Okay.
If that's something you'd like to see, we'll definitely add it for the next one, or we can actually give it to you on Friday as well. It's up.
Yeah.
Okay, so the online sales are up. So at this point last year, we had generated, and I'm trying to do this from memory, but I think a little over $700,000, and this year we're at 850, on our way to, we think, a little over a million in 2018, and last year we were at a little over $800,000.
I think it'd be interesting, just the fact that, you know, we see a lot of red here, but we're not necessarily seeing that it's actually being filled, the bucket's being filled a little bit differently.
Yeah.
It's just trend of society.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll absolutely include that. Thank you. And what you'll notice is we do have year-over-year growth at 2.7%. Our budget called for four, so we're a little bit below that. A question that I will answer for you, what does 1% mean to the City of Arvada? That is approximately $530,000. So if we're off by 1%, that would be what we would be down at the end of the year. We are expecting the fourth quarter to come back and pull this number up, and so we're hoping to not be down quite 1%, hopefully a little bit less than that. So I actually created this slide for Dot, and she's not here. So the rest of you are going to just have to listen to me. Basically, what this slide is, is month-over-month, either growth or reduction as compared to the prior month. So in essence, it would be saying January sales in 2018 compared to January sales in 2017, did we grow or did we go back? And it's really busy, and I apologize for that, but I want you to concentrate on just one line, which would be zero. So as you can see, the majority of our time in the last 10 years has been above zero, meaning we've been in a growth pattern. The pink line, which is 2019, and the blue line, which is 2010, and the green line, 2008, you will see spent most of their time below, most of their time below zero. In other words, it's a time period where we were losing money or not growing each and every year. So we'll draw you to one line, it's kind of in the middle, and so dark blue line for 2018, and you'll notice, starting in June, and for June, July, August, and September, we're hovering around zero, which means we've been flat. If we blow that up a little bit, take a look at it just for 2018 as compared to 2017, you'll see the first five months, we were growing pretty significantly. And for whatever reason, starting in June, we slowed down. And so we have negative in June, very small growth in July, negative again in August, and a very small growth in September. Ultimately, this is what led us from approximately 5.3% at the last time I came to you in sales tax growth to the 2.7% we are sitting today. Any questions on that? Good.
Okay, so auto-use tax is one of the other significant revenue sources in the general fund. Like sales tax, auto-use is similar to sales tax. We've seen nine straight years of increases in auto-use tax. You can see that on the graph. Naturally, we know that sales for vehicles have gone down, so we did adjust our budget for auto-use tax. We had reflected a 6.3% decrease in auto-use tax, but what we're seeing so far year-to-date is almost an 8% reduction in auto-use tax. So when you convert that to dollars, we're looking probably around $150,000 to $300,000 gap between our actual and budget for auto-use tax. So just another sign of kind of the softening in our economy.
Mr. Jones.
I was actually on a call today with regard to auto sales in the U.S., and so it's not going to get any better over the next probably four years. So I really, I mean, I think we, as we look at that, we need to make sure that we're not overestimating auto-use. It's going to drop dramatically over the next four to five years.
Yeah, certainly, we do have some decreases in our 10-year model, but we're not quite sure if it is enough.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
I think it's just because millennials aren't buying cars. Isn't that what we were told?
Well, it's a part of it, but people aren't buying cars as frequently as they were. And, you know, we're getting, I think, most people are getting ready for a recession in their mind. It's predicted that 20, into 2020, early 2021 is the next kind of recessionary period, so.
Yeah, and that would be one of the first things that people kind of slow on. When we switch to the other funds, you'll look at this graph, and again, most of the graph is green, which is good, but we are keeping our eye on four funds. The first one is community development. The fund balance is still strong, so that's a plus, but we are seeing that our revenues are down from last year and that our expenditures are up. So we do think some of this is a timing issue in terms of when we complete projects, but we do want to keep our eye on both the revenues and expenditures on this fund. In the housing authority, we are watching our expenditures and also the fund balance. In the housing funds, our allocation for 2018 increased, so the housing authority is able to serve 15 more families. We went from 480 families to 505. Actually, my math is wrong, so I'm sorry. I'm in finance, 25, huh, 25?
The numbers aren't important.
Yeah. So we will be monitoring the expenditures in this fund. If the allocation goes down in the next year, this is kind of when we worry because we can't take people off of the housing list. So the way we would reduce expenditures is to reduce the assistance percentage, or as houses fall off, we would not replace them with new houses. The other fund that we're looking at is the golf fund, and we have talked about, a lot about the golf fund throughout the budget process, so we will keep an eye on revenues, especially in terms of restaurant revenues, as those restaurant revenues, those increased restaurant revenues are really the primary source of paying off the COPs that were issued for the remodel.
Something positive on that. In speaking with Gordon, he advised me that the golf simulator at Westwoods is getting a lot of use now that the weather's gotten worse. And of course, we didn't have that last year.
Right.
So we'll be cautiously optimistic that that's going to generate some additional revenues that we may not have forecasted in.
Yeah, we hope that they do use the simulator and then maybe go and have a drink or dinner after.
Yep.
Okay. And the last fund is the risk management fund. We are monitoring expenditures. We do have a fair amount of repairs that we still need to be completed from the hailstorm from last year, so we are watching expenditures, knowing that our expenditures will probably increase just a little bit as we complete some of those repairs. And then this last slide is investments. So a couple things on investments. One, the portfolio increased by about $7.6 million, and that's primarily due to our increasing fund balances. You know, in the first part of the year, we did see increased revenues, so this portfolio change does reflect that. You can also see that our portfolio is still very well diversified. We do have heavier positions in agencies and treasuries, and that's just because the spread between our corporates is pretty tight, so really, it's more advantageous for us to invest in agencies and treasuries. And it does not show in this slide, but 50% of our portfolio is invested in maturities less than two years. So really, a lot of our portfolio in short-term investments, and we really have two reasons for that. One, the yield curve is flattening, so it really doesn't pay for us to invest longer than two years. So the difference between the short-term and long-term rates is very tight still. And then the second reason, with the interest, the interest rate environment increasing, we are positioning ourselves so that as these maturities fall off, we can reinvest in investments with higher interest rates.
Okay, in summary, one of the questions that did come out during our budget process was what do we expect from a one-time money for the end of the year? And certainly, we've done some research on that, and we feel on the revenue side, even with the items that we mentioned that are certainly below our budget, our buildings, because of our conservative nature in that world, has been above the budget and certainly has still have more building permits than we do on average. And so if we take interest revenue, which is above, building revenues, which is above, auto-use sales tax, and net all those out, we're feeling that we'll probably still be to the good about $1.3 to $1.6 million at the end of the year. So that will obviously be available for City Council. On the expenditure side, we usually average somewhere around a million to a million and a half. And so our feeling is that, when it's all said and done, City Council will have somewhere around two to two and a half million, maybe three million on the high side, to allocate to one-time projects that we work through during the budget or items that maybe come up during your retreat. So that is our best guess at this point in time. We certainly will keep you in the loop as we close out the last couple of months, and then we'll be able to report in January if that number has changed. We did talk about various revenue sources. We are quite excited. The last time we presented, 3F was not, we didn't know the results, so that is in, and we're in the planning process for that. And so we will be working on meeting with outside council and working with legal to really figure out a good timeline on that and when we can issue. We also are going to get a new PCI rating here, hopefully in December. All that research has been done, all the data's been collected, and now they've got to go through and recalculate. And so we're quite excited to see what the additional resources that City Council has dedicated towards roads over the past three years, how much progress we have made. And then I think Mr. Devon would like to finish.
Yes, thank you, Brian. So as you can see, there's multiple signs of an economic slowdown, and this is something that I think we envisioned. We've had about seven years straight of economic, robust economic activity, but as leadership team, as we saw the signs of an economic slowdown, we believe that we should develop a contingency plan for either a slowdown or a full-on recession, as Councilmember Jones just mentioned. We will be looking to, for City Council, for direction on that during the retreat in January. We believe it would be a prudent step for us to look at a contingency plan, which would, frankly, look at, you know, projects and programs and initiatives that we are implementing right now or scheduled to implement, that we would need to look at, perhaps rethinking those, and getting some direction from council as to what we should do to pull back. It's better to look at those kinds of decisions when we're not under a gun and under a situation where we have revenues that are diving. I can speak from experience of that in my time in California, where we had no contingency plan, and we simply had to get it done on the run, if you will. It's better if we can plan for it. If something does hit by the end of 2020 or 2021, then we will at least have some steps in place that we could implement, given council's direction in order to, you know, conduct some sort of an orderly reduction as opposed to a fire sale, if you will. So that's something that we would certainly look forward to some discussion during the retreat.
Very good. Any other questions from council? Mr. McGough.
Another question, but I do want to point to page three of your booklet. I think there's some outdated language there where it still makes reference to the improvements to Seventy-Second Avenue, will be between Kipling Street and Oak Street, and I think we just need to update that language there to ensure that we're...
All the way to Sims.
Yeah, that we're, that our project is from Kipling to Sims Street, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Page three.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Go get people to spend more money and get our numbers up a little bit better before you end.
Yeah, I think the presentations before did a wonderful job, so.
Yes. Very good. Okay, next, we're going to now go to our public hearing portion, open the public hearing on Council Bill 18044, an ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the City of Arvada Deferred Compensation Plan. Mr. Devon.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We're going to have Deb Nielsen, who's the Chair of the 457 Plan Board, make a brief presentation on this item.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The 457 Deferred Compensation Board of Trustees is proposing to add auto enrollment at 1% with an auto escalation clause of 1% annually until 6% is reached. This will affect all new benefited employees and current benefited employees that are not enrolled in the 457 plan currently. Studies show employees are not saving enough for retirement, and this will help bridge the gap between the 22% that is suggested and the 18% that is currently invested or contributed by employees and the city in the retirement plan. Employees will receive notices from our record keeper informing them of the auto enrollment, when it would start, and how to opt out if they choose not to enroll in, not to be involved in the auto enrollment. They will also have the option to change that amount if they wish to go in at a different amount than the 1%. They can also opt out of the auto escalation at any time. They can also opt out of the auto-escalation at any time. Also, if an employee does miss all the notices and fail to opt out of the auto-enroll or auto-escalation, there will be a 90-day period where an employee can contact the record keeper and stop that contribution and also request the contributions that have already been made returned to them.
Which has some tax consequences, right? Because if it's been deferred, then that's happened pre-tax, and so, there would be taxes taken out on...
Correct.
If they did choose to take money back out.
Correct, yep. That is correct.
Good. Okay, is there any member of the public that would like to address city council on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council questions or action. Mr. Pfeiffer.
Yes, I move that Council Bill 18-044, an ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the City of Arvada Deferred Compensation Plan be approved on final reading number 4661 and ordered published by title only.
Motion for approval? All votes cast. That passes six to zero, Ms. Miller being absent. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 1804-5, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow for a light industrial use warehousing and distribution for Factory Motor Parts, 6510 Wasworth Boulevard, Suite 100. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Planning Manager Rob Matana will get us started on this item. Mayor, just so that you know, the next two items on conditional use are quasi-judicial.
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. The applicant is requesting approval of a conditional use permit in order to perform warehousing and distribution within an existing commercial shopping center. Factory Motor Parts provides premier automotive parts, resources, and programs to fulfill the needs of dealerships, professional service centers, fleet, and wholesale distributors. At the October 16th meeting, the Planning Commission did vote unanimously in favor of this conditional use permit. Therefore, staff does recommend to city council that the conditional use permit be allowed for the light industrial use for Factory Motorsports. We have received the signed posting and mailing affidavit, and they are in order. The applicant is here for a presentation or to answer questions. And we also have Planner John Moore here as well, if you have any questions for staff.
Very good. The posting log and affidavit will be made part of the record. If you intend to testify on this matter, we need to raise your right hand. Swear affirm the testimony you've been giving. These proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Okay? You may proceed. State your name and your address and what you would like to tell us about your application.
Perfect. My name is JR Morrison. I am one of the regional sales managers here in Colorado. Once again, Factory Motor Parts Company. We are a premier automotive parts supplier. Once again, as he stated, we cater to dealerships, independent repair facilities, that type of stuff. We are currently servicing customers in this market from other locations that are not in the City of Arvada. So, we would like to have a home in Arvada, so it'll put us a little closer to our customers and improve our service.
Okay, very good.
My name is Brendan Cagney. I'm the broker, working with the company to get into the space. It's been vacant for more than four years. There's been very minimal interest. They don't know what to do with the space, so this is going to be a very minimal impact use. There's no beeping trucks. There's very few trucks coming in and out throughout the day, so it's not going to impact the neighborhood or anyone around it. The landlord is very excited about filling the space.
Any other member of the public wish to address on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion, open it up for city council question or action. Mr. Marriott.
Yes, I just have a couple of questions. So, when you talk about Factory Motor Parts, what kind of parts are we talking about? Is this auto-body type stuff, or is it everything, or...
No, it's actually, we don't do any auto-body parts. They're all mechanical parts.
All mechanical.
So, from brakes to alternators to spark plugs to filters to that type of stuff.
Okay. And is your distribution, kind of wholesale distribution to then retailers, whether it be a place that installs a part or a retailer that then retails it and collects the sales tax on it, or do you have retail as well?
We do not have, we don't have a portion of retail. So, what we do have is, we don't sell to our competitors, is what you're referring to. So, we don't necessarily sell to the big-box guys, the O'Reilly's of the world. But what we do do is sell to the independent repair facilities that would then, you know, we sell exempt, and then they would be the collection, the tax portion.
The ones that collect the tax, right.
Yep.
Okay, sounds good. And then one last question. Do, when an independent repair facility needs parts from you guys, do you typically deliver it, or do they come and pick them up, or how does it get in their hands?
We deliver it.
Or do you ship them?
Yeah, we deliver it. That's kind of my tease, and I say we deliver automotive parts like pizza.
Okay.
So, if it's longer than 45 minutes, it's not free, so.
Right. How about, how big of a space are you occupying?
Today?
No, this new proposed...
About 8,500 square feet.
8,500, okay. And how many delivery vehicles will you have operating out of there at any one time?
Out of there, we'll have probably four or five. There, we usually use Chevy Sonics, if you're familiar with the Sonic. Small hatch, great gas mileage. That's primarily what we use.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Pfeiffer.
I think Mr. Marriott answered my question. It was around the number of deliveries, but in the planning report, you talked about one delivery, but you're talking about just stocking your shelves with a bigger delivery.
Correct. Yeah, we had a replenishment order from our distribution center, which is in Aurora, and that comes once a day. It'd be around the lunchtime hour as well.
And so, you want to use a retail shopping center to do warehousing? I mean, that's the end of it. Just dropping my head around that. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Jones.
Just a follow-up question. So, will those deliveries take place out the front door into the retail shopping parking lot, or out the back door you're loading? Because I'm looking at the map, it looks like there's a loading area.
Yeah, so our dispatcher would be set up in the back. Vehicles would be parked in the back. Ultimately, we wouldn't occupy any space in front.
And how does, how does somebody, when they, are you going to have signage on the building that says Factory Motor Parts?
I'm sure.
And for that retail traffic, that thinks they can go in and buy...
We do, we do have a, it's a little new to us, the retail end, because we historically haven't done that, but it sounds like that's something we may make choices with.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Ms. Ford.
I'd like to make a motion if there are no other questions.
I think Mr. Pfeiffer's got another question.
Sorry, I can't hear another bite here. So, you're not doing retail, so you need a sign still up front, and you have doors that say not open to the public? Because you are in a shopping center, so it's going to be a little weird.
We are in a shopping center. So, historically, what we've done is that we are not necessarily on the beaten path, let's say, but whatever the city requires for us to have for signage, we will absolutely have that. Does that answer your question?
No. So, do you allow, so you're going to allow, because where you are in the shopping center, you're dead center.
Correct.
Right? So...
So, we have been...
So, you're going to have people walking up and down. There's restaurants, there's the Jefferson, the licensing, you know, and so you have that going on. You've got bingo, you've got all sorts of things going on in that. And you're telling me that some people might walk, and you have right across is O'Reilly's Auto right in the parking lot. And that's, what are you, what are you going to do? You have your doors to open to the public that can come in and buy something, or...
We, so, we've been in business for 75 years, and we haven't done any retail operations until very recently. We just acquired another business in North Carolina, and they do have some small retail operations. So, the consensus was, is that because this is a retailed space, that when we put it in there, we would have a small area for, you know, once again, since we sell hard parts to fix vehicles, we don't necessarily have the commoditized things that you would see in a retail parts store. We don't have steering wheel covers, we don't have armor all, we don't have any of that type of stuff. But we do have other commodity stuff that people would buy, whether it be windshield washer fluid, whether it be antifreeze, wiper blade, that type of thing.
So, you really don't know if you're going to sell to the public or not in the retail space?
My initial understanding is no, they're not going to. There's going to be most likely a bell on the front door that says ring for service, and it's going to probably say something along the lines of by appointment only. They'll ring the bell for service if they want someone, because they're going to be stationed in the back. Most of the activity is going to be going on in the back of the center. So, if someone comes up and wants something, there's most likely going to be a bell on the front that says ring for service. Someone can come from the back to see what it is that they're looking for. The initial plan is not initially to do retail sales, any retail sales out of that space. They're toying with the idea in the future of potentially adding retail, but the initial plan for this space is not to do any retail.
So, just warehousing and deliveries and that is it?
Yep.
And how do, I'm looking to our staff, how do we handle like the O'Reilly's and stuff? I guess that's retail? That's considered retail, that storage?
Yes, that's a retail with accessory kind of storage space, yeah, for the parts that come and go.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. McGough, you've got a question before Ms. Ford makes her motion.
I do have a question. So, the conditional use permit that it requested before us is simply to perform warehousing and distribution. So, if there were to be a request for retail sales, would that be handled administratively by staff in the future? If the, at this point, the conditional use...
In that existing permitted use?
Correct. That's allowed by right in the B2 district.
Okay, so there would not have to be, it's used by right, so this conditional use permit is, in its limitations, won't affect future retail.
Correct. If they decide to put retail in the future, it won't affect you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Ford.
I move that CB 18-044, an ordinance approving the Second Amendment to the City of Arv...
Nope.
Oh, wait, I'm on the wrong one, sorry. Jeez, where am I now? Sorry. And I have the book even.
1804-5.
Thanks. I move that CB 18-045, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow for a light industrial, excuse me, use warehousing and distribution for Factory Motor Parts, 6510 Wasworth Boulevard, Suite 100, be approved, subject to the attached updated condition of approval on final reading number 4662, and ordered published by title only.
Mr. Marriott.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to be voting yes on this motion, and I just want to kind of state why. I think this is a real good use of retail space. It's obviously difficult retail space, as evidenced of it being empty for so long in this market. And the thing that makes this application particularly, I think, workable is, is that this is clearly a much less intensive use than other things could have been had it been, you know, any other number of uses that are, that subpar retail might be used for. But this particular use, in my eyes, is not intensive and actually, I think, gives the applicant lots of options with the option of potentially doing retail. I would encourage the applicant to do so if that fits into their business plan, but because of those reasons, I will absolutely be voting yes.
Just so that the record's clear, I want to make sure that the motion is based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission as a supplement to Council Member Ford's earlier motion.
Ms. Ford has indicated her affirmation of that.
I have.
I always have to tell clients in court, a head nod doesn't work when it's being recorded. You have to be verbal, which you don't have a problem with.
No, no problem at all. Thank you.
All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Thank you all. Good luck to you.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
You bet. And I agree with Mr. Marriott. I hope you do add a retail component to some extent there.
No, we don't.
Okay, very good. Next, I'll open the public hearing on Council Bill 1804-6, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow for a live-work use in the P1 Professional Office District for Lantern Home Group, Live Work, 7901 Ralston Road. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Again, Planning Manager Rob Matana will start this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor and council. The applicants are requesting approval of a conditional use permit in order to allow for a live-work space within an existing structure. Permitting a live-work use on this property would allow for Lantern Home Group to relocate their business to Arvada and to allow the owners to live on the site. The office space will be used for up to four employees and the two owners. At their October 16th meeting, the Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor of the conditional use permit. Therefore, staff does recommend approval to the city council for a conditional use permit to allow for a live-work use in a P1 district, and we have received the signed posting and affidavit, and they are in order. The applicants are here for presentation or to answer questions, and John Moore is also here again as well.
Very good. The posting log and mailing affidavit will be made part of the record. Anyone that wishes to testify on this matter, feel raise your right hand. You swear affirm the testimony you've been giving. These proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Very good. You may proceed.
Hi, Diane Howard. I'm one of the co-founders of Lantern Home Group, and we are part of Keller Williams Avenues, the larger office where our team resides currently in Wheat Ridge, so.
And I'm Chris Harn.
Very good. What would you like, what would you like to say about your application?
So, part of the reason for us, or the biggest reason for us moving our office to 7901 Ralston Road is to move from Wheat Ridge to Arvada because we are in, we are in Arvada-based business. All of our employees live in Arvada, and the majority of business and homes that we sell are also in Arvada. So, we, that's, that's kind of it. Yeah.
Very good. Is there any member of the public that would like to testify on this matter? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, open it up for city council questions or action. For 35 years, I was right across the street from where you're looking to locate, so I know it well. Mr. Jones, you can move this on.
Just a couple of questions on parking. Is there frontage? Is there parking on the front side of the building if a customer were able to come? How many spots there on the front are there?
So, currently, there is. However, with the setbacks that are about to happen...
Right.
The parking is really primarily in the back. There's about 10 spaces, and the entrance for the office would be through the back.
Okay, so you've kind of flopped the orientation, and then, and so there's adequate parking back there. And do we require, you know, live-work, is there a parking ratio?
Yes, it is, we'll see here as four parking spaces for employees, and up to four employees, and then two for home, which is our standard residential parking requirement.
Okay. That was my only question, again, knowing that parts of Ralston Road, they're going to be changing there, hopefully, in the next three years. So, okay, thank you.
We would be supportive of that, by the way.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Mr. Pfeiffer.
I'll make the motion if there's not any other questions.
You may proceed.
I move that Council Bill 18-046, an ordinance approving a conditional use permit to allow for a live-work use in the P1 Professional Office District for Lantern Home Group, Live Work, 7901 Ralston Road be approved on final reading number 4663 and published by title only.
Motion for approval?
Again, just to make sure that the record's clear, Council Member Pfeiffer's motion also should indicate the motion's based on the findings of fact adopted by the Planning Commission.
You so acknowledge.
Can I think about it? No, I, sorry. Apparently, we're all making that mistake tonight. Yes, I do acknowledge.
That's why we pay for our attorney to be here.
We're making him work tonight.
Well, that's good. He needs to have a little bit of work. All votes are cast. That passes six to zero. Welcome to Arvada.
Thank you.
Enjoy your role there on Ralston Road. Many a night, I felt like I was living at my law firm across the street, but I never actually, well, actually, I did probably sleep there a couple of times, but that's a, that may be a different story.
Thank you.
Very good. Now, I'll open the public hearing on our final public hearing for tonight. Council Bill 1804-7, an ordinance amending Section 98-68, reports by vendor, payment of tax of Article III Sales and Use Tax of Chapter 98, taxation of the Arvada City Code pertaining to vendor fees. Mr. Devon?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Currently, the city allows vendors to retain an amount equal to 3%. Bless you. Of such taxes are $100, whichever is less, to offset the vendor's cost to collect and remit sales tax. We commonly call this the vendor fee. What is before you tonight is an amendment that would eliminate the vendor fee. Vendor fees have been, were common among many municipalities in our region. 10 of the 25 largest cities in Colorado have no, no longer allow vendor fees, as we did a survey leading up to this item tonight. The rationale for eliminating vendor fees is that modern technology... The rationale for eliminating vendor fees is that modern technology, including the computerized point-of-sale technology, availability of online sales tax filing systems, has really kind of eliminated the, or reduced the need for vendors to, for example, pay for filing sales tax. Last year, Arvada businesses retained a total of $548,000, over $548,000 in vendor fees. So, however, the majority of these businesses retained $5 or less. So, while there was a lot of money retained, but there was very little money really retained by individual businesses all through the year, $5 or less. Only 1% or 84 businesses retained a maximum $100 vendor fee, so that was the maximum a business could retain. We have pledged in anticipation that council would be supportive of this ordinance tonight. We have pledged the amount of money that would be retained, or, you know, would be kept by the city, this $548,000 towards the debt service for the amount, for the issuance of the bonds that were, would be issues, would be issued, we're planning to issue in response to the successful three-year election. And staff is recommending approval of the ordinance.
Opening up for public testimony, Cindy Kreitzer has signed up to speak. Good evening, Ms. Kreitzer.
Good evening. I have something written here that I can read, but I forgot my reading glasses, so I'm just going to have to kind of wing it. I have no problem at all with rescinding this vendor fee, but what does concern me a little bit is the funds that will be saved, the $550,000. Maybe those should be going toward all of the other capital improvement projects that the committee recommended, because it was my understanding that this new bond was going to be debt serviced by the money from the bond that was expiring. So, you know, my only concern is where is that money going to go? And I would prefer that we send it towards some of these projects that we reduced or deferred or actually eliminated from our list from the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public wish to testify? Okay, any questions by council? Mr. Marriott?
Yeah, I will, if nobody has any other questions, I'll make a motion, then I'll speak to the motion, if that's okay? So, I'll move that Council Bill 18-...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to keep interrupting tonight. Mayor, can you close the public hearing?
Yes, I'll close the public hearing. Public testimony portion's closed. Okay. Move that Council Bill 18-047, an ordinance amending section 98-68, reports by vendor, payment of tax of Article III Sales and Use Tax of Chapter 98, taxation of the Arvada City Code pertaining to vendor fees, be approved on final reading, numbered 4664, and ordered published by title only. So, a couple, couple comments I want to make about this. As a retailer in my day job, you would think I might object to this, but actually, I don't. And here's why. Because as retailers, what we're looking for is, we are happy to collect sales tax, and we are happy to remit sales tax. What we want is a simple streamlined way of doing so, and I think the City of Arvada has done that with its sales tax division, with making it easy for retailers to perform their duty of collecting, collecting and remitting sales tax. So, for that reason, I don't have any issue at all with the vendor fee being eliminated. And of course, there's a larger discussion these days going on with sales tax and collecting and remitting of sales tax, and all of us retailers all across the state, I believe, want the same thing, which is, which is a simple streamlined method of both collecting and remitting. And so, I compliment City of Arvada for taking that step. As far as the public comment we heard tonight about the money going to other capital improvement priorities, in this particular case, it essentially does, because of the 72nd Avenue project, we had asked that to be not just Kipling to Oak, but Kipling to Sims. And so, the paying for the Oak to Sims part, kind of this vendor fee paid for part of that. So, in a way, that is kind of taking another item off that capital improvement list, paying for it with these, with these funds. So, I'm very comfortable with where the funds are going. So, for those reasons, I will certainly be voting yes on this motion. Ms. Ford?
Is it okay to ask a question at this point?
Well, since you didn't ask it earlier, you go ahead, go ahead.
No, my question, the question that I wanted to ask was to Brian Archer, our Finance Director, based on what Mr. Marriott talked about in terms of that money. Because what I wanted to ask Mr. Archer was, because a question, well, never mind, if at some point, well, let's see, how could I ask this? So, I'm assuming that this was identified, you know, and looked at by you in terms of this would be the best usage for that money, but if something were to change in the future where, you know, I don't know, a change in interest rates or something, where you looked, you know, in looking at the budget and looking at things, felt like the money would be better used towards another thing, is there flexibility? I mean, we're not set per se, even though we're saying that tonight, that this is where we recommend, is there, I mean, is this definitely that would be it, we would pay it off?
So, it's part of the funding source to pay for the debt, and certainly, if interest were to change in the future, and we could have a lower prior cost, that would be available. We would bring this back to city council for reallocation to something else. But as it sits today, it would be what we would need to be able to pay the bonds.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no other questions, if people will vote on the motion. All votes are cast, that passes six to zero. I want to compliment Ms. Kreitzer for continuing to be a champion for projects in our city, and to the extent that we either have additional funds or make other cuts elsewhere so that we can get more of those capital improvement projects done. I appreciate your attention to that, and I think the rest of council feels the same way. So, thank you for that. We had an item E on our public hearing agenda for tonight. Do I need to take any action of that, or do it force from the...
So, I'm going to recommend that, staff is recommending that we pull this from the agenda tonight. Staff still needs to discuss certain aspects of this with the council before it proceeds.
So, do you need a motion?
Please.
Okay, Mr. Marriott?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to move that we remove from tonight's agenda Council Bill 18-048.
Staff wants to give us some more information on this before we bring it back for a public hearing. All votes are cast, that passes six to zero, Ms. Miller being absent. Next, I'll open it up for public comment, if there's any other public comment tonight. Seeing none, I'll close that portion, open it up for city council reports. And I want to start off by thanking David Jones. You may have, word was getting around that there was a possibility that there was going to be drilling under Rocky Flats for directional drilling, what people know as fracking. And when this got on our radar screen, with the possibility of wells being drilled along Highway 93, not in the City of Arvada, but north of the City of Arvada, Mr. Jones got right on the ball on this issue and attended meetings at the county with the applicant who was looking at potentially doing drilling with county officials, with folks from Rocky Flats. And his attention to this, I think, played a significant role in helping convince the applicant that it's not the right time, and maybe never will be the right time, for an applicant to want to drill under Rocky Flats. So, I want to publicly thank Mr. Jones for his work on behalf of his neighbors and for all the citizens of Arvada on that issue. Ms. Ford?
We can now give reports?
Yes.
I wanted to just encourage everyone to buy tickets to see the Christmas show, Elf, which is starting tomorrow night and runs through the 23rd of December, and at the Arvada Center for the Arts and Humanities. And then, I also wanted to encourage everyone to, in addition to spending their money at local retailers, to think about coming to the Arvada Center as well for their fine art market show and sale, which is starting on the 29th of November and going till, until December 16th, remembering that artists too are small business owners. And I know we'll have a city council meeting prior, but just to give everyone a heads up that on the 4th of December is Colorado Gifts Day.
Good. Mr. Marriott, you're next.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to reiterate the presentation we heard about Small Business Saturday coming up this, coming Saturday, and really call it the small business season. So, if you can possibly find it and buy it in our community, please do so. That money stays within the community, provides jobs, those jobs provide housing, provide all the necessities of life for our residents, as well as then circulates through our economy and creates a more vibrant economy and a better place for all of us to live. So, as you go through this holiday season, sometimes the path of least resistance seems to be going online and having a cardboard box show up on your porch. We've heard a number of testimonies over the last six months about recycling. The best way to recycle is don't use in the first place. And so, all those cardboard boxes could stay where they started from, and go to your local small businesses this season, and please patronize them. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Pfeiffer?
I just want to just share thanks. This is the season of Thanksgiving, and I want to thank the citizens, I want to thank all of you, and I really want to thank all of the employees who spend 24 hours a day keeping our city safe and vibrant, and just want to share thanks.
Mr. Jones?
I'll start where Mr. Pfeiffer ended. I also wanted to just thank our staff, police officers, our firefighters, our citizens for a great community that we live in. But also wanted to, and thank the mayor for your very kind comments. But also, I have the opportunity to serve on the Jefferson County Economic Development Corporation Board, and Preston Gibson with Excel Energy was just elected as our chairperson, and I spoke with him directly after that meeting and told him that we would be becoming very fast friends, we already are, but just, we're going to lean on him heavily to make sure that we can continue the progress and momentum in the City of Arvada whenever we have questions or things that need to get done, because sometimes, I think, maybe their idea of fast and our idea of fast are different. So, just, you've got my commitment that as a representative there on that board, that I will do everything I can to push Mr. Preston along. Thank you, and happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, it's, Thanksgiving's a wonderful time for gathering a family. It's a little bittersweet for me this year. Last year, I got to go back and visit with my, both my parents, and it was the last time I was able to talk to my dad before he then passed in April, and to spend time. So, just to know how important family is, and to be able to spend time with your family, cherish it, and never take it for granted. Everyone have a very safe travels during this holiday season, and enjoy that Turkey Day. Mr. Devon?
Just a reminder, next Monday, we will be delivering the presentation on the vision and strategic planning initiative called Speak Up Arvada. We are looking very forward to providing that information to council and getting feedback from you as we go through a series of workshops leading up to the strategic plan session in January.
Okay. Mr. Daley, thanks for keeping our priorities straight tonight and making sure that our i's were dotted and our t's were crossed appropriately. Thank you. We stand adjourned.